Good afternoon, I call the board of the City of Washington Shore Planning Commission meeting. It is Tuesday, August eighth, twenty twenty-three, and the time is two P M exactly. Before I do the roll call, Dan sent me a note, so this will probably be the last meeting he has served this. And so do I have a motion to, and you've got it, right? Do I have a motion to excuse Dan? Moved by Mark seconded by Paul. All right, Paul in favor?
Hi.
You carry? We'll get you there. All righty, so I will do a roll call for the rest. Commissioner Ward, Commissioner Barr? Check the mute button here.
Here.
Commissioner Lawless here. All right, as a reminder, we still have a vacancy. If you know anybody, please let them know. And we will work on getting application in and getting in to meet the mayor if you have anybody that's interested in attending. I haven't had much luck, but we need to do that. And if you know, like I said, a good thing to do is ask somebody to just come, sit through a meeting or two, and then if they have an interest to come on, usually you would scare them away, but who knows?
I've spoken to several people, but nothing yet.
Nothing yet. I'm doing the same thing. All right. Do we have a motion to approve the meeting agenda? Mark second. We're gonna make this easy for you, Thor. Mark and Paul. All right, all in favor?
Hi.
There we go. All right, we have a minutes. Carrie did a great job on the minutes. I haven't seen anything to add or change. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes for the regular City of Washington Shore Planning Commission meeting on July fifth, twenty twenty-three?
Motion.
Second. Of second by Paul. All in favor?
Hi.
All righty. Before we begin public comments, we did have some written comments from Vida. We really appreciate those. I had some issues getting them out to everybody, Vida, so we won't discuss them in detail. I'll kind of do it as we go through. The, what I've discovered is a PDF form, we have to hover to see the comment. You have to look at it electronically. That's fine. Go ahead, Vida.
Hi. So if you have Adobe Pro, there's a way to show the comments. It's a sidebar, so that you don't have to hover?
Yeah, I don't have Adobe Pro. I've never invested in it, but we'll look and see if we can get a copy of that and get it printed.
And you can also get them printed out. That's correct. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Vida, and we'll do that. We will, I will sort of reference them as I'm going through, but many of them will take some deliberation through, so we won't get through all of them today as we go through, but we appreciate that. Do we have any other public comments in the room? No comments per. When do I want to do this? We'll do that on every course. All right, so no old business, new business. I have included on page five, six, a letter I sent to city council. I just did this for information. This letter went in strictly on my own initiative, and notice I said this was not an action of the planning commission at all. It was just a, just basically, I felt that the council could have done a better job taking time to consider before recommending adoption of a particular member of the court, that making, for recommending adoption of one citizen's comment, that's all. That's all I wanted to do. I just want to make sure everybody had a copy of it. Is there any questions or discussion on the letter to council I had?
The only thing I'd like to say is I appreciate you doing that because a lot of work went in, as you stated, and for just it to be halted by just one person, I think, so I'm glad you sent that to council.
Yeah, and I just wanted to counsel a form that that particular addition was something that was deliberated on and discussed, so I didn't want them to sort of dismiss it out of hand. And Marshall, is the S M P coming back Monday, next Monday night, the council?
I believe that it is.
Okay, good. And I'll be there. And that should be their final actua. They, and we're, you can explain to me, what is their expected role on Monday night on the S M P?
The, it's my understanding that the council will take a vote on whether to adopt or send it back or revision the S M P, and if adopted, it will go to the Washington State Department of Ecology to be finalized.
So, and any public comment during that would be stared at city council meeting, public comment availability. The S M P has its own public comment sessions as part of the process. Anything that happens Monday would be part of the city council business, basically.
Correct.
This is the best way to put it, right?
Yeah.
So any comment that was directed to city council Monday night would require a city council deliberation, but not a separate comment to the S M P. It's really a comment, the comment to the action city council might take.
Correct.
Okay, because the comment for the S M P has been powerful.
That window has been open and closed.
Okay, I just want to, so everybody understands what's going on. There's a lot of confusion because people think it's a public area or a public meeting about the S M P. That's already happened. But we have the city council business, which is clearly an opportunity to comment on, as any city council business does. But the result of that comment would be, have to be taken up by city council, not by Marshall and off the part of the S M P process. I guess that's the third way, Bobby, explained it the best way, right?
Sounds accurate, yes.
Somebody asked me. All right. I have comments, Vida, on the proposed guiding principles, but again, I don't want her, she has comments on several of these things. I'd rather everybody look at it, go through it, so I can get them out. So other than Vida's comments, which we'll go through next time, do you have anything else on this, on the guiding principles? Good. Page four. Challenges. This is kind of inspired by Thor. Only because some of the things you've been saying, I thought it wasn't a bad idea to list some of the challenges that the city faces going forward as it looks to update zoning and to manage future development. First one is the history of urban zoning, so many areas of uncalled potentially incompatible mixed use. The two that most commonly come up, residential in the business, business commercial, and heavier commercial or industrial in or near the downtown corridor. Any other things we should sort of add in this? Go ahead.
I think we'd have B two twenty years ago in the downtown corridor, except on that street.
Yeah, there's no B two in downtown.
No, it was some years ago.
Yeah.
So on Menard?
Yeah.
No, not Menard. Shoal.
Shoal.
Shoal and Seahorse.
Oh, okay.
Seahorse still has has B two designations.
Right. But in practicality, in this town, we haven't gotten there yet. There hasn't been a lot of distinction between B two and B one uses that you've seen. Have you marked recently?
I think we did mark it.
Well, yeah. I think I'm getting with both comment.
And because that's what I think we're trying to look at in the downtown corridor, to get some of the sort of maybe, who talks about something like the downtown corridor? We always pick on the car wash, which may or may not be appropriate. There is a oil loop, there's an oil rack, car repair place right in this middle of the downtown. Those sort of things you wouldn't typically see in a more modern downtown corner.
That's what's about to our storage or lumberyards.
Yeah, that's what we're talking about. Also lumberyard, people. Some of the elements can't. So that's sort of what we're getting. So any sort of other things to consider under the, I mean, the impacts of urban zoning are everywhere, and I think if you did redid the walk around done by David Thorne, you can see the perfect example of pyramid zoning kind of on pad where you've got eight plexes right next to Avalon Towing, right next to whoever, who went back in there, so that sort of becomes a mismatch, yeah. The second bullet, I'm not sure about the warning. Design of transit lodging development is, has overcome available possible future business commercial. I think we kind of focus a lot at the southeastern end of Point Brown. We look at that. But they're also creeping up other places. The place on Menard, right next to Hydrate. New residential, it's going to be transit lodging. That's a nice little piece of commercial property that it's going to only do transit lodging. That's why they built the residential transit lodging. This is going to be one. We'll talk about that more when we do the walk around. Lack of available parcels for dedicated larger scale future commercial development. There are not a lot of parcels left in this town where you could do that sort of a larger scale commercial. Do you not have the right agenda?
It does not appear that way. We are on August eighth, right?
Yeah, I'm on page eight.
Oh, there we go.
There we go.
As I get out of the minutes.
I'll help you.
There we go. Thank you.
We're on page eight. So, I mean, is that, do we still feel that's a valid concern, the lack of large, lack of availability of larger commercial parcels? Because we're really getting sort of hemmed in. We can do any of that.
Well, if we say we don't like pyramid zoning, then we have to have a substitution from kind of for those commercial parcels that are being used by, by the national union, right?
Yeah, I mean, it's certainly, as we get into commercial zones, we're gonna have to, we'd already talked in the business district, but definitely talk about not doing residential and dedicated commercial zones. That's a hard discussion we'll have to have. But if we believe, and this is a discussion we're gonna have, is if we believe transit lodging is sort of driving, is the future developer driver for the next fifteen years in this town, we start looking at areas like mixed and high density for transit lodging, where it makes sense, where they're their own area, where they're not in the middle of, or bothering a R one district, so. But it's just, I brought that up because I never really thought about that. You put it up on the phone, and I said, you know, there really is, there's only three parcels we know of that that you could do that right now in Ocean Shore. The one next to the post office, the one across the street from the post office, and the one that we found. Can't tell anybody, because. So otherwise. The other challenge, and it's a challenge which we need to face, is the continued growth of the wetland encroachment and encumbering of undeveloped parcels and the potential diminishing future mitigation bank possibilities. Are you concerned about that, State or Marshall? Do you think we have a diminishing future mitigation bank possibility?
Yes.
Okay, so it doesn't hurt us putting it in there? That's a challenge if we look at this. I mean, it's not a challenge we can address.
No, it's, it's just, it's just inherent that we only have so much bank, and we have probably more more parcels with wetland on it than we have mitigation credits to compensate.
Oh, absolutely. No doubt, I'm right about that. And I didn't put it in there, but a large a significant portion of the undeveloped residential lots are likely encumbered by wetlands and wetland buffers. Is that a true statement? It's not in here, but would you say that's a true statement?
I would, I would say that there are quite a few out there. I don't know that it's
Significant.
Yeah, I don't know how significant that is. I see it on a more frequent basis because those properties tend to show up less expensive in the market, and so people jump on the least expensive and call planning. And, and so I see a lot more of the interest in the wetland properties, you know, just based on the pricing in the market. It doesn't mean that there's more of them out there. It just means that there's more interest because they're priced more.
Uh-oh, Vida wants to make a comment. Vida, we'll let you talk. You know what else is supposed to be in the middle. Go ahead.
Well, I just wanted, thanks, Gary. I just wanted to add that there is a possibility of adding credits to the bank through various actions. It's in the N B I document. So we're technically not limited right now to the credits that we've been awarded so far. So there are enhancement activities that can be done, at least that's my understanding, to add to the existing credits that we have. Thank you.
Yeah, and, and I've talked recently to Marshall about this, and there's other things we can do, the enhancements we may be doing, but I wanted to put this out, as I see this going out, as a sort of a education so people understand that we're sort of got a, we have a, we have a growing wetlands, and I don't argue with anybody that says they're not, but they are, because I've looked at their real photos. The wetlands are growing. It's a natural process. Wetlands grow, especially in this environment. At the same point, our mitigation bank, it is getting spent. So I think I put this on here so people would sort of, would sort of move us as a city to look at these credits. What do we do to sort of get, to work through credits? Work, work through different mitigation measures and all that sort of stuff we can do as we're doing the avoid, minimize, mitigate process. That's sort of what we're looking at. That's the only reason I put on there. Any discussion about listing these challenges out?
Just to comment, city owns a number of properties in Division nineteen and nineteen A that are underwater or really low. Would those be possibly enhancements to the wetland bank?
No.
I've, I've done some research with, and had discussions with the Corps and the Department of Ecology to see if we could add parcels to the bank. It's going to take a significant a significant volume of land, because the percentage of credit generating wetlands within any given parcel is so small that it doesn't, there's not a, the cost benefit analysis doesn't pencil out. Yeah, yeah, it's not a one for one. It's, it's like a, you know, we got a total, and this expands on Vida's comments, that the bank we were awarded in our initial credit award, about eight credits. We have the potential to earn, I think, up to thirteen, so there's or maybe it was nine credits, and we're at fourteen or something like that. So we have the ability to earn more credits through performance enhancing operations within the bank itself.
Yes.
But, but both of the times I've had people try to donate wetlands, I had some really pristine wetlands on a parcel of Ocean Shore's Boulevard, where they wanted to just donate it if I could get it into the bank and it would be preserved in perpetuity. And there's not a mechanism to do that, which is unfortunate, because there's a lot of properties that, that it would be nice to, you know, whether you make them a park or just a natural area, you know, there, I think there would be benefit in that, but there's not a mechanism at this point.
Yes, there is.
Go ahead, Vida.
Hi. Well, I think that some of those properties, it may not benefit the Weather Wax Bank, but if people want to do a conservation easement on their property in perpetuity, I believe that is an option, but it's, it's not to benefit the bank. I'm just saying. You know, I think David Lynn might have done that, actually.
That's my experience. Conservation easement is a great and wonderful thing, but it's not necessarily part of a mitigation bank, which is great. I mean, so there's nothing that says you can't do a perpetual conservation easement, and I think that would be welcome, right, Marshall?
Absolutely, yep.
You know, so that's sort of what we're looking at.
And that was my recommendation to the folks that were wanting to potentially benefit the bank somehow was to contact some, like the Cheyenne Basin Land Trust, you know, they, they do stewardship of mitigation easement stuff.
One more thing.
Go ahead.
There's a lot of talk in land use planning circles about what they call form-based zoning codes, which is kind of the opposite of this strict land use code we have, and most that we have right now, and have had since early part of the last century. Basically, what they say, it might be useful, so it's very confusing, is basically land use based on needs rather than strict borders for single-family duplexes. It's nicely useful in in those situations where neighboring storefronts, that's not, I don't know much about it, I've reading a lot about it, but it's
A form-based?
Form-based code. Seattle's considering it. Mostly because these older neighborhoods already have a version of them, I guess.
Yeah, it was. And the other thing to say, on a blind line, and interesting, we did go to that Blue Tone meeting, the the urban structure architect had a long discussion about how the, it's kind of, you hear it a lot, the development of the car-based suburb and the elimination of local groceries and duplexes and all of that, that sort of made us a less healthy society. Yeah. And, and the fact that we live and love and work in a city that was entirely based upon car-based travel. That's part of the issue, where there is, on a more thoughtful, modern, maybe form-based, you would have smaller retail mixed in with multi-family, two, three family, and single family, and all that sort of stuff. And I'll talk about it, the Boston community and all of that. I mean, it's an interesting discussion, and it's always a good one to have. But as you think of challenges sent in to me, as I hear challenges come up in here, I'll add to the list, and what I'm viewing, as soon or later, this has to be presented. So I'm sort of looking at how do we present the process we went through when we look at updating the zone. And a lot of it would cover that supply. So that's sort of the guiding principles and the challenges we see out there for the city without specifically saying how anything we do solid. And, you know, what we're gonna do. So, on to the next order of business, is looking at medium-density residential. So what I did for this is I took the R two, R three, and I did R four. Just sort of tried to move them into the medium density. And we talked about some of this stuff, and so the intent here is to not vote on this proposed language. The intent is to go through the proposed language changes and then go through Vida's comments and combining all of that, come up with possibly something we can vote on at the next meeting for the R N. And that's why I sort of only did the R N in here, and I will jump into some other ones as we go. We also have some definitions we're gonna look at as we're going through this. So right now, we had a discussion. I've changed, this, this is the old R two, which was considered low density, which is interesting. And I understand Vida gave me some information about how building codes treat duplexes differently than five plexes or above, which is good, so I understand why the beating was in there. The duplexes were considered low density, because that's sort of more common. What I think we have, though, is in Ocean Shore is a unique situation where the single family is sort of, single family and there's very few appropriate duplexes in there. That's originally why the pound was probably carved R two out. But when you go look at the zoning map, there's not a lot of R two. There's a lot of R three, R four, and R five, so the thought was we would carve R two. When you go through Vida's comments, she has some references to the I D C and some other stuff about medium versus duplex. But for now, I said the medium would be for a single, it's for medium-density, one, two, three, and full-family dwellings. We had a discussion, does the four fit in there? I went back through because we go up to eight in the current zones. Let me look. We went up to nine. That basically left five, six, seven, eight, and nine to go in the high density. Kind of a common sense. So two, three, and four in the medium. And then I added the words while providing affordable housing in the community, which is interesting. And I bring that up because that was actually the old R three district. The old R three zone had those exact words, while providing affordable housing in the community. So way back then, it was thought that R three was sort of the more affordable version. And so I just want to hear a discussion about going all the way up to R four in the medium, and if there are any thoughts about that. Carrie, I'm gonna ask you, thoughts on going all the way to R four, or?
I, I think it's appropriate. I think we can look down some of the throughs that we've done, and in fact, we see that anyway. So I think up to R four, I mean, up to, to four dwellings is fine. A fourplex would be just fine, I think. Any more than that, no, you're getting in a higher density, but I think up to four is, is fine, in my opinion.
Yeah, and we've looked at that, and I had looked at saying, and I don't think we want to say that, but I did look at the definitions of row house. Because there's not many fourplex non-row houses. A couple in town. But most of the fours I've seen are some kind of row house construction. Is that accurate, Thor?
Yeah.
I think there's one or two four units on Point Brown that are two-story, two and two, two over two. Those are the only ones I know of. I've been trying to scratch my head. So the question is, for aesthetics or any other reason, we have the opportunity to limit, not limit, or say, in the R N district, multi-family dwellings must be row house style. Just, some discussion about that, follow or mark about what your thoughts are.
Well, I, I agree that we should go up to four in the medium density. Yeah, I think that, as Carrie said, is appropriate. Now, do we want to limit it to certain type of construction?
We can.
Or do we just want to leave it open to one, two, three, and four?
I think we should leave it open. I don't think we should limit the type of.
I agree with you.
I just bring it up because there's an aesthetic to a row house that's different than a two over two.
True.
Just to say. Adorable, though?
I agree. I think that the row house pride of ownership is limited. In other words, when you see standalone structures, they tend to have more pride of ownership of the inhabitants or owners than a row house. And the row houses tend to be, well, we're looking at it, tend to be rather, oh, how should I say? Low interest in maintaining as a withdrawn home.
But what's interesting is some of the new obvious rental construction that's knocked off on the next street east is going up in a row house manner.
Could be.
That's market doing that. I think people, even if they're renting, see it more desirable to have the row house style than the two over two.
People who purchase, if you want to buy
Oh, absolutely, purchase.
condominium unit, if you want to call it that, or one structure that has two hundred tend to be less popular.
I just, I wanted to bring it up because we had a discussion about row house, and it seems to be the trend, but we don't have to go with the trend of more. Is that what you're saying, we're getting built for multi-families?
The, well, there's, there's discussions from a couple of developers to diversify that row house concept to, to kind of expand on what Thor said. You know, try to create more pride of ownership in creating a structure that doesn't, you know, fit that mold of a row house and still meets the intent of a common wall structure, wherein it could be subdivided for individual ownership. The subdivision for individual ownership seems to be picking up in the market right now. So that, that should, you know,
And one of the things we can see that in the conversation. One thing we're looking at in this zone and other zones is to allow subdivision into a smaller lot size that perhaps will allow somebody to consider individual homes on a subdivided lot and not having to go over common wall. I understand the physics are often that you can't get for subdivided lots on a current seventy-two hundred square foot lot, because you gotta do access and easements and all that sort of stuff. But there would be the option to do that as opposed to doing what the common wall allows you is to more easily build the structure and subdivide. Is that a good description?
It does, yeah, but there, there seems to be an appetite for you know, smaller parcels, smaller structures, and you know, based on conversations I've had with some of the development community, if they could build a smaller structure on a smaller parcel as opposed to a common wall structure, they would opt for that.
Maybe our recommendation to city council will accommodate that. Right?
And they tend to share shorelines, water lines, stuff like that, too. Water, okay, even though they don't have to.
Yeah, the row house stuff.
Standalone.
Standalone, yeah. That's true. All right. So the permitted uses. We're probably, we're not going to go through this, or we can, again, saying that there's no single family in the R two, R three. That's a hard one, and I hope everybody wants to discuss it today. That is definition of residential pyramid zoning, is saying you can build an R one and I hope everybody wants to discuss it today. That is definition of residential pyramid zoning is saying you can build an R one and an R two. Where you can build an R two, an R three, you can build an R two and an R one and an R three. So what this basically does is maintains pyramid zoning in the low density. In the medium density. Vida, yes?
Please don't allow shared sewer lines. There's an issue with billing for sewer on that. And there's also uh, property ownership issues.
Yeah.
When you had, so please don't allow that. Thank you.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll that's sort of one of the things that are gonna come out of all of this. And so what I always said is the only permitted use is our RL which is single family. Two family, three family, four family. Any discussion about any of that?
Just a little bit. Um, we, we have a contradiction, let's say, in R one. R one allows two families to have two separate structures in that division along you call one of them. And yet we still have, I guess, like a quasi-legal duplex zoning in R one. Is that something we should address?
Um, we I
I don't mean to make it tougher, I mean just.
No, no, no. And we need to, and maybe we look next meeting specifically at the additional dwelling unit language in seventeen zero five zero. And that would help some. And you, I think we brought this up so many times, it's worth taking a look now at the additional dwelling unit language, because what are your, I guess the difference would be an ADU can't be subdivided and sold. It's a rental property associated with a residential property.
Maybe, but it is a separate property and the duplex area right now is not separate. It has to be combined. That's the common law right now.
Right. I know what you're saying. And that, so what you're basically saying is in effect, you're building, you're building ADUs in duplexes off.
That's what you wanna call it.
Yeah. It's a good, good point to look at. Um, we have a comment from Vida on resource extraction that I need to look at. Um, so I brought I don't know where I got that C, and I think I got that from R four. Which says row house and common wall residential developments for the underlying land is subdivided to allow ownership for the individual lot calls. That must have been existing language in R four. I didn't bring the R four with me because I have a lot here. Um, is that not allowed as a conditional use in R two and R three? Do you know, I've had Marshall?
The common wall language? It is not.
So it only picks up at R four?
Correct.
Okay. Well, please, let's have a discussion about allowing this at R two, R three, R four. Um, I'll start with Marshall. Do you think this would increase interest in this? But there's not that many R two and R three undeveloped parcels, really.
I, I, I'm, I'm not sure how to predict that. I, I don't know if that would generate more interest in those areas. There seems to be enough um, um, R four.
And B two.
Well, yeah. Um, where, where they're finding, you know, room to do these common wall subdivisions. If you were to reduce the, or if you were to allow that language in a common wall subdivision in an R two or an R three, you know, it, it might make more of those available, but.
And and the reason I, now I know why, why I recommended pulling this in is because it is in the R four. And so including in this would allow if we convert R fours to RM, it would allow that continue in the R fours in addition to the R threes and R twos. And again, we're gonna walk around the map. It'll be a shorter meeting today, which is great. And we're gonna go back and look at some R threes. And so that may give us some more thought. So any objection to leaving that in for now and bringing it up next week for vote?
Okay.
Well, okay. So I just happened to see that in the R four and I realized it would be an omission if I didn't put it in the RM. Um, uh, dwelling structure. And this is this is on the definition. Vida gave us some help on the definitions and I've worked on definitions. We'll talk about those. Um, it said dwelling versus dwelling structure. So we're gonna, I'm gonna recommend we introduce the term dwelling structure. Um, they used to say one single family dwelling, which is interesting. I suggest we strike that old, old really weird provision that two family dwellings have eight thousand square feet. We discussed that. There was no reason for it. Um, so but C and D I'll talk through. See, I have D in here twice. And we'll get rid of the second D. Um, C, basically I said subdivision, short flats, flats and no boundary line adjustments will have a minimum lot size of seven thousand two hundred square feet for three and four family dwellers. Because we had talked about that a little bit. So we're saying um, for three and four family dwelling structures is what I should say, or dwellers, three or four family dwellers, we need to keep the original lot size. Um, I said basically you could divide the lot in half and build two duplexes as D. And so E is mislabeled. And one thousand eight hundred square feet for single family structures. Well, I gotta do my math again. I was actually looking at this. One, forty percent of one thousand eight hundred, because that's what it'll come up. Here is the question. As far as covered area. Do you see what I was trying to do, what we were trying to do with there, Marshall?
Yep.
We're basically saying you take an existing lot. If you wanna do a three or four, it has to stay that size. Want a duplex, you can divide it in half. Which sort of gets to the Mariner twin home concept a little bit.
Right.
Those are a little bigger.
Yeah.
But that's if you wanna see what it would look like, you could go up Mariner Drive and see the twin homes that were just built. Not selling. Finally.
Yeah. Those are common wall.
Yeah, those are common walls. But if you wanted to build duplexes and sell each duplex individually, it's even enough of four affordable housing on an individual seven thousand two hundred. Or if you wanna go single family, you can subdivide the lot four ways. That's kind of what we talked about. Discussion about sort of that minimum lot size there.
I think it's a great idea. And I think
We talked about it in here.
Right. I think there'll be a market for it. Like we said, if we allow it, someone, some may take advantage of it, others won't. But at least the option would be there.
Yeah.
Right now, the option is not there.
And if you do go see what happens out on Ocean Spray, just on the other side of Ocean Shore Boulevard, you see where it's done pretty well. Where they did, uh, we had a chance to go out there, but he did a pretty decent job at buying that. Is he still around, Ketter? He moved to Florida. Oh, that's right, he did. I forgot, yeah. So that's sort of where we're at on that. Any discussions about the RM? And you'll notice what's hitting me here is no commercial use, no transit logic. For the RL is the exact same, which is on page eleven. And here's what we're gonna talk about. E, and I threw F in there. Or S appropriate. So the RM light mix medium density residential, it's a handful. But it's basically allowing some flow of limited commercial activity in the RM zone. We had talked about, because we're gonna do the map again, or I might start putting a pen on the map again. We had looked at that R three over in the, I call it the Trident area between Wainoochee and Razorclam. So you got this R three crescent right in the middle of R one. And the discussion then was maybe that isn't appropriate for transit rentals. But then we looked at some of the other R fours and R twos, which are sort of off by themselves. Maybe that is appropriate for transit rentals. So I think this was the discussion of the group was we would consider recommending allowance of transit rentals in an appropriate way. That what we believe would be acceptable for the community. But not blanket saying it, we looked at the map, say that any RM could have transit rentals. That's the hard part. Um, so that's sort of the thought. And then the second thing I threw in there, and this is language we need to start really punching around is light commercial a, a, activities that do not detract from the primary residential care for the neighborhood. Such uses may include grocery inconvenience stores, cafes, sandwich shops and coffee shops. When light commercial activities are allowed, off-street, off-street parking subject to the off-street parking of seventeen fifty-four will apply. Come on page eleven. Um, go down to E and act, yeah. And I'm not, I mean, so first of all, I don't know. I'm struggling with that. We need to beat up and I want a discussion about uh, mixed medium density with transit rentals, I believe, with a desire to look for spots. Do we wanna add the ability to do light commercial activities as well? So just thoughts, and I'm gonna let you start, Carrie, as we sort of, as you're remote. And allowing transit rentals and light commercial. Right, Carrie?
I, I think that we do. I mean, if we're opening it up to transient rentals, it makes sense to have light commercial activities going on there, like coffee shops, sandwich shops, things like that. I think those would benefit the community. And I would say, yeah, I, I would almost think that they would be needed in that kind of situation.
And maybe, and that may be driven as we look at the map too.
Correct.
So you know, what I, what I was trying to avoid, and it may be non, a non-issue when we look at the map, is trying to say you've got medium, medium with transit rentals and medium with light commercial. You end up with three medium zones. And we may, if we decide that's appropriate, but, and more thoughts about adding like commercial?
It just depends on, you know, the location.
Yeah.
We already have that in seven, eight and nine, right?
What?
We already have that in seven, eight, R seven, eight, nine.
Yes, we do. Not these exact same words. I'm modernized in the book. But believe it or not, that is allowed today in R seven, eight and nine, which nobody knows, but yes.
I like it. Um, the only sticky part that I could see is that off-street parking requirements in some areas, there may not be adequate, which would then need a detractor.
But I think we almost have to, because there is no on-street parking anywhere in Ocean Shore. There's no such thing as on-street parking in Ocean Shore. So if you're gonna run any sort of commercial business, you need to have the ability to provide off-street parking. That's the only reason I said that. I put that in there. Marshall, that's over here.
Yeah, that would be the, that would be the case. You're, you can't have a business in a, you know, residential zoned area that that doesn't provide for adequate parking.
Then it has to be off-street, because there is no on-street, safe on-street parking anywhere in Ocean Shore.
We don't wanna be plugging up the neighborhoods.
Or any row. There's no row in town where you can park off-street anywhere safely. Just the design of the city. We have bike lanes, you can park in the bike lanes, but plus. So again, I think for now we'll leave that in there. The other thing I considered was making light commercial a conditional use. And or transit rentals. We talked about making transit rentals a conditional use. Um, but then we decided that, then we discussed possibly not. Um, conditional, as I understand it though, as you continue to grant the same conditional use permit in the same area, sort of related could hear it here and say it was gonna state need to change the code, right? No.
Yeah, I don't I don't necessarily think that would be the case.
Is there, is there a benefit to making light commercial a conditional use in the RM? I'm gonna ask Marshall first.
Well, you, you would force somebody to provide justification either for or against the use. You know, if, if you had an area where there were transient rentals allowed, you know, if you
I'm not saying transit rentals, I'm just saying the light commercial. portion of it, the coffee shop, sandwich shops, making them a conditional use as opposed to a permitted use in the RM light mix.
It might be a good way to introduce it to the code. You might have less pushback. Um, and it would give the community a chance to feel their way into that. Uh, once you end up with a couple of coffee shops or a really good deli in a neighborhood that everybody seems to be going to, they might be less opposed to having one of those in their neighborhood.
But again, we're not talking our, our low dens, we're not talking our L, strictly talking right, you know, and you may benefit from living close to that R three banana and all of a sudden there's a good coffee shop in there.
Yeah.
Who knows, possibly. I mean, thoughts of a permitted use versus conditional use?
Thor, it matters. Conditional right now, seven, eight, nine.
Conditional, that's the other thing I just remembered. It's conditional, not permitted.
Yeah.
Paul, you think?
I don't see the difference. But conditional is fine.
Yeah, what I, what it does is causes you to do the notification of the neighbors. Have the hearing. And if you gotta invest in the business, it's fifteen hundred bucks, right, for coming? So it's not like on third or fourth. Carrie, any objection if we wanna move that paragraph back to a conditional use?
No, I, I think, I, I like what Marshall actually said, is that it does give us a chance to ease into it and it might better address our situation where we know we're gonna have some odd overlap in putting these new zoning titles into place.
Okay. All right, good. So the rest of this just mirrored the RM with no commercial or uh, transit rentals, so.
I think we have a contradiction between this and city practice now with respect to transit rental. City considers transit rentals the commercial use. I understand. However, the state's report said no.
That's why I didn't, we said it's a commercial use. That's why I listed it.
What's the city going to do with mine?
Well, I, I, that's why we say transit rentals, if adopted, we will recommend, we're considering, we're talking about recommending transit rentals in some RM zones, in the RM light mix. Zone is what we're talking about.
As a residential use.
As as a permitted use. We don't say if it's residential or commercial. Basically, it says transit rentals are permitted and the RM slash light mix, just like we did the RL light mix. This is the RM light mix. With the addition of transit rentals. So page thirteen, we're gonna go through this today. I'm so happy. Um, you weren't here for the whole dwelling versus dwelling structure versus building discussion, most of you that I have fun in here with, but the old term was dwelling and it was really confusing throughout the code. As I read through the R two, R three, R four, R five, R six, R seven, R nine, what the dwelling was meant was to encompass, dwelling, the intent was to encompass, encompasses a building that that included all of the residences. So I felt calling it a dwelling structure is a little more definitive. Definitive is how it's used throughout the code. Does that make sense, Marshall?
Yeah, that there was um,
There still is today.
Yes, some consternation about a dwelling unit versus a dwelling structure
Correct.
versus a, a structure.
Right.
You know, these, the definitions, you can parse those definitions to, you know, mean different things.
So I, I thought by calling it a dwelling structure um, and then Vida has given me some input and we'll talk about even set by more, go ahead.
I think the problem was that dwelling structure made it required that the number of dwellings had to be under one roof.
And that's what this, this intended definition is.
So if we're talking about a four-plex, you can't have four dwellings on a property unless they have one roof for all of them. And that's what caused the problem down in uh, Seashore, where they had their foundation joined underneath their ground as a way to get around that uh, fire thing.
So what we were saying was a dwelling structure is a building designed exclusively for residential purposes. And I'll tell you right now that uh, Vida has recommended we strike that including one family, two family, multiple family dwellings and just say a building designed exclusively for residential purposes, but not including hotel or motel units designed for short-term occupancy, which may be the simplest definition. Because that kind of, we're not saying it's a one, two, three or multi. It's anything that's a residential building is the structure. If you jump down to seventeen oh four, one seventy-five, the dwelling unit is one of more rooms designed for one family. So in a triplex So in a triplex. Coming in single roof triplex, there are three dwelling units in the dwelling structure. That sort of clarified it a little bit, doesn't it, Marshall?
It does.
Do we need the term structure at all?
Yeah, because we did, when we had this dwelling, it was really getting confused between dwelling and dwelling structure and dwelling units. That's kind of where we had that. Uh, dwelling multiples just to carry over. Um, I, I think it's used elsewhere in the code, we can look. Uh, one family dwelling not changing. Um, and I think Vida's had a comment and that we need to relook at the, if we need a separate two-family dwelling duplex definition by international code. Dwelling unit means one or more rooms designed for one family for living and sleeping purposes containing complete housekeeping facilities for one family. All rooms composed of dwelling units shall access to interior doors to other parts of the dwelling unit. Which is commonly dialed out, but not our problem. So understand that's a unit within, that's one family per family after whatever, but that's all pretty clear, right? Marshall, we've had no issues with that.
No, I, I think that is pretty clear.
Um. Accessory dwelling unit is defined here and I'm gonna pull that code up the next time. A dwelling unit that has been added to, onto, created within or separated from a single family's past dwelling unit. For a complete independent living unit, which is for cooking, eating, sanitation and. Sleeping. So that's no change of definition and I haven't looked at other definitions of ADUs. Have you ever? Or anybody else says? And that's never seemed to be an issue. All right, so the last is page fourteen. This is where we're starting to get too many.
Hey, Gary.
Go ahead.
Before you leave, uh, transient rentals, I just wanna point out. Um, so transient rentals really should be considered commercial to invoke the IBC. And sprinklered buildings. So I know there's, you know, re- they're residing there, but. From a construction point of view. I would call those. Even if they're single-family dwellings, I would still call them commercial with respect to. Which code they're gonna be built under and whether they're, whether sprinklers are gonna be required as they should be.
Yeah, they, and as I understand the city, if you designate. New construction as a transit rental, you have to have the, you're meeting the IBU.
It, it does, it does move you into the IBU. I, well, I had this discussion with Roy, um, about a week ago.
Yeah.
And even though it's a, a residential use, the occupancy, when you have people in a building on a transient basis.
Yeah, and that's, yeah.
It's a health and safety issue.
Yeah, and that's not.
Life, health and safety.
And that's, yeah, that's not as defined by being a commercial property or not, it's defined by the use of it. For, for short-term occupancy. So if you went to get a creative rental license, you would have to get an inspection that proved you were a brickle. That's basically it right now. So that's sort of how it goes.
Why mature term use being more risky than, uh, long-term?
Always been the way, was that way when I was.
I had to tell you that somebody that's in a house that they've never been in before, that's on fire. Um, that's, that's where they invoke that requirement for a sprinkler because chances are they don't know by feel how to get out of that structure.
Okay.
So to increase the chance of survivability, they're requiring sprinklers in that.
I don't, and I don't argue with the idea of sprinkling many, many municipalities, there are resident sprinklers required on everything.
Yeah, exactly.
That many do, but in two thousand fourteen, state street court said that. Short-term rentals are a residential use.
Yeah, I don't agree, or I don't disagree that it is a residential use, but the occupancy is commercial. And, and you also have the, uh, you know, the transient nature of somebody being unfamiliar with that structure residing in the structure for short.
Are structural differences besides sprinklers that differentiate?
No, it's purely, purely safety.
I mean, it already is mainly the healthy side sprinklers what it has to do.
No, anything else would be the standard square footage before you put in a firewall and fire doors and all that sort of stuff.
Yeah.
But what you can't do is you can't reduce the requirement for sprinklers by using firewalls and fire doors because the nature of the fire trial is different.
Yeah.
Cause I know in some codes, you can't, if you don't wanna put sprinklers, you use firewalls and fire doors to reduce the square footage, you don't have sprinkler. You can't do that if the use is for short-term, short-term occupancy. Sprinklers are, are required. Pretty back in my old days.
Yeah, that's a, that's a. An argument that we get into on a regular basis, um, and, and it has to do with shifting into the.
Yeah, the C.
IBC from the residential code.
Yeah. And again, the reason for the IBC is not that it's residential or commercial use, it's.
The occupancy.
The occupancy.
What do residential municipalities require on SDRs?
They're supposed to require sprinklers.
I, I think it's by code, they're supposed to, if it's a short-term rental, if. If the nature of the occupancy is short-term rental, then the, the IBC requires that it be sprinkled.
Yeah, but there were, many, many jurisdictions have had a lot of short-term rentals on existing homes that have been there for some time.
Right.
Are they requiring?
Red, red bits and stuff like that? I don't know, I don't have to answer that.
And I can tell you, I stayed in. Many Airbnb, not in Ocean Chores, but on the coast that didn't have sprinkler.
Yeah.
So it'd be the only jurisdiction that requires it, I don't know, that's okay. Because most of our. I guess it would only come up is if you built a single, you have an existing single family. And the city council beats without our recommendation, a single, an existing single family in an R three. The city council agrees with our recommendation to make that RM light. Mix where you can have transit rentals. Then the discussion would be, if your single-family home doesn't have sprinklers, does it need to be rectified? And that's a building inspector decision. That's not us.
Absolutely.
That's the IBC. Um, but it's something that would have to be faced. What we're seeing here mostly is all this new construction that's going to transit rentals, Roy is able to when they were making a requirement to the building permit. But where we are now possibly saying there are some, our, our, our ends and our edges where we're gonna recommend the city council allow transit rentals. Then in that case, existing buildings may need to go, may or may not need to go through a retrofit, that's. That's Roy and other folk people to research and the fire marshal typically, of to be able to have that. And good discussion, Gary, good. So we've got the RL we've done and we voted on. We went through the RM. Medium density residential. And that seems closer. And the RH is the old R five, R seven, R eight and R nine. The RL, we haven't defined yet, but we do it on the map. That was the single family. Light commercial and we may relook at the light commercial definition to restrict it even further because of single family. Then we talked today about the RM light mix. And then I threw R six in there just. If we see something where is. And I don't think it'll be in there, I don't think number six will go through where we see something that will be moderate density residential with a slightly more aggressive. Not aggressive, more intensive commercial. Business use beyond the coffee shop, sandwich shop. That's just thrown in there, I don't think it'll survive the light of day. And then the RH. Mixed zone with a high density. Uh, residential mixed use and I'm thinking again about that area we're all supposed to go look at. We're also, it said we wanna have a downtown corridor. A retail commercial, general commercial. And then the B three zone, which is basically the resort tourist that's never been put on the map. The in code, but we've already looked at applicable areas for that. So any discussion about our eleven zones so far? Uh, okay.
Yeah, number six, like you said, it looks redundant to me based on what we have on the others.
Yeah, I'll just, that more came down to. Roll behind David Point here. What we end up doing in there. I mean, it's short of throwing our hands up and saying it's, anything goes, but, uh, it's. I don't, I forget what it is zone today, if it's called business zone. And what this is, what, what this thought is for is eliminating. Residential, eliminating the residential and business pyramid zoning. But allow for the realities of what's out there. So I mean, I, this was all sort of with the gear toys we talked at length about, three on our way to not have residential in. The, the business districts, cause that's the worst pyramid zoning in my opinion we have, that's impacted us the most. So if we do that, we say B one, B two, B three downtown corridor is no residential at all, other than motel, hotel. And transit rentals. And you get it in, multifamily, then you get all that issue, and we'll talk about that. Um, we kinda go through, go from there. Any further discussion on any of that? Oh, that's a long one. Um. All right, so I wanna take a quick look at the map, but it won't be a long look today.
Can I say something? About.
Go ahead.
So Gary, the ones, um, that are already transient rentals, uh. Why don't you wanna talk about non-conforming use? And designating. Parcels as non-conforming and just go forward with the, with what you wanna do with the rest of the city.
And that's, that's sort of where we're leaning towards right now.
Okay.
And the B, the business gets first, basically saying residential is a non-conforming use in the business district.
Yeah, because there's no real detriment as far as the city's concerned, I mean. Yes, if they wanna expand or something like that, but. That's what I would do. Okay, thank you.
So all right, quick look at the map and I don't think we're gonna have much, because we've got no new areas, that's all right. So. I'm gonna need Marshall to look over my shoulder. Cause I'm never.
Sorry.
That's, I'm never straight on this. So. Question is, this is the favorite, this is one of my favorite parts of town now, Ocean Spray, White Cat.
It doesn't matter, okay, unfortunately.
This is R nine. R seven?
They voted it all over.
And we have no real idea why this was R nine versus R seven.
Yeah, unless, yeah, unless they were gonna build, you know, hotels for the golf course.
Yeah, that's true. So my, our first thing we talked about is carving this out. By saving that commercial off. And we'll call that commercial. In which commercial a guest or we do a new restricted commercial.
Currently it's B two.
Yeah.
That's B two?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So all of this then, this is my only comfortable penning. My only comfortable penning. Will become some form of high. And this too would also be high over here, cause this is currently R seven. So this would all be, and there is probably. Back out there, the other day on my bike. This probably depending on where you are, still no more than thirty percent developed. Single family through all of this, wouldn't you say?
Yeah, there's, I, we've issued a few permits to there in the last two years, but.
But it's not highly developed.
No, no, there's still a lot of, a lot of single.
Well, a lot of single, R seven lots.
Yeah.
That have nothing on it and it's only encumbered about twenty to thirty percent of single family.
Probably somewhere.
And then you've got these apartments going in and you've got the two condo blocks by the, that guy, so that's all good. Ah, what is this? I was gonna ask, I know I asked you, Marshall. This dark blue, R nine.
Uh, is that?
Brewer or?
Yeah, that's Brewer.
Got him, no, that's Nicholas.
Nicholas or. There is a. Mostly single family.
Yeah.
And, you know, he, there's, there's nothing bigger than that, developed in that area.
Also R nine and this is one of the only R eights in town. And then this is R two. Which is weird because there's all sorts of different stuff in here. Right?
Mostly, uh, mostly developed a single family.
Yeah, I think it's any multifamily.
There. Um, there are.
I can safely put a pen around it because it's unique.
Yeah, there's a common wall structure being built on a corner of.
One of, oh, not. That was probably down on barewood. Okay, so as we look at. The. And I wanna do a little bit of pen today. Also, this needs to be in here too, what I hate. So what, one of the discussions we have is this could be R one, could be RL. Could be RM. I mean, the benefits to both. This is existing. And we know most of this is unbuildable, right, Marshall? I don't need to come all the way down here. And this is not oil, these set, right?
This one, the front of the world of lots, right, it's not.
I know we've gotta add some oil, but lots in here, I have future. All of this. Basically, in this configuration is currently. Listed as our. Eight, nine. Well, I know, we're gonna take a walk through the wetlands out here one day, and I know these are extremely encumbered by.
There's, there, there's some upland out there. If the person were to, you know, go through that and, you know, I know one of the owners is, is looking at some of the upland for development in there.
Okay.
Just trying to figure out how he's gonna mitigate.
Okay. Maybe it probably is, all right. So with this all, I'm not gonna put it on here right now, may become some of the only RH. In town. Right? Um, this. And we've never talked about this and I wanna get this done. This would become RM, cause there are five places and four places in there. Right? This currently zoned. Duplex by my house, I don't know, I have to go on and look. This would definitely, I think, there's no argument, would be our. Without up there now. In single family mix, but mostly.
Uh, there's some higher density, uh, structures there.
Some condos and all that stuff.
Yeah.
This is not about the any duplexes, this little piece.
Not that I'm aware of.
I mean, so.
Single family, si- single family residences and.
So as we carve this out, I'm gonna leave these, these two areas as question marks and we can talk about the R two, the R two making of R ones. Reserve the single family, this one not as much. Cause it's sort of the quintessential planning buffer, you go RL, RM, RH, but I don't know if that's really applicable in this case, but you can talk about that. Um, but these are, these two are two, we just think about what to do. I'm not ready to put anything on paper, those I think were good. This commercial and this will end up being RH obviously, and this will probably be RH. The other easy ones we'll do before we. Get to the problem is, we talked about this little wonderful little banana out there. So that would be RM that we had just talked about that way with no transition. Then we're gonna have the discussion about this. With, I wanna go T question mark. Just a lot, I mean, it's sort of, this end of town is almost becoming resort tours, but there's no discussion, we have to have a long discussion about that. This could be RM with no impact, cause it's four-plex. Yeah, and they're locked up, I don't know why it is four-plex, but it is, some develop, somebody camps on it once in a while, yeah. This. Would be RM. I believe, right? Cause that's all. You've got some common wall subdivisions in there, don't you? And those are rented.
I mean, they're, well, they're rentals now, there's a, a proposed common wall to be built, uh, this coming year.
Yeah. What's brown, R five? This is where we're gonna have a problem. I don't know if there's any fives in there. But perhaps this is one of those where even if there is, this is appropriate RM. I don't know if there's any five places in there. I don't think about it, it doesn't matter. This can be easily RM, so that's not an issue. So I just wanna put some lines on it, we'll talk about and put labels on them. This is pretty simple. What is it now? B one, Marshall? B one, Marshall? Wow. If only. So that's currently B one, but it's. When I was thinking that R M light commercial is a conditional use, that was kind of like, can we get the boat yard back that we get? Cause this is one of these places that has become de facto residential and it's so residentially developed. There's very few undeveloped lots in there.
Yes, that, that place has been consumed in the last year and a half by transient rentals. There's a lot of, um. Duplex or two unit, two unit transient rentals were built along in there.
And I know our vision for the future was that would have been a great B one corridor. But if there's only two or three lots left developed. What's, what's the thought? Marshall, do you have thought in that? It's, it's pretty well built. Yeah, I can't, I, there's very few lots left in there. So, alright, it's gonna be hard to do label. I draw a long leader for this. So this is R M. Low density mixed. Light mixed is what we call it. That would be where we would talk about that sort of thing. Where you can do transient rentals. You can have a commercial as a conditional use. That's the sort of thing, that's a. Sort of what you, you drive that road, Paul, you know what's out there there. You can drive down there, I ride my bike twice a week down there, there's nothing in there. The great unknown, so what's the answer in here? Did you get a chance to go out there? You're still retaining. Yeah, it's, it's, as we discussed last night, it is a mismatch, you've got single family. There, there are. Duplexes, triplexes, commercial. Uh, there's new houses going up that advertise. Transit rental.
Those will be over on, uh, Silver King.
Yeah, so there, there is some of. Everything in there, yes, and then. This R five, where you can't do transient rentals, is sort of. Single family mostly in there, I think. So I think whatever we do in there, this is sort of the only, I hate to say it, the only unspoiled. Texture out here, does that make sense, Marshall? That's sort of.
It's being used for what it was zoned?
Well, yeah, what the intent behind the zoning was.
Maybe a little white, um, there's more single family units there than.
Yeah, but I mean, if we did this as. R M. And it's currently. Five flex, but I don't think there's any five flexes in there, so four and below would be fine. Then there's this, and I don't, I mean, we've got these weird mischanging miscolors in here between B two and B one. The intent was to guess get the B two off of. Point Brown.
That's the only thing I can think of. This really, but I don't know how we ended up with the, with the mix of B ones all the way against, um. Silver King. And then.
Yeah, the B two is off of the courts. Which made no sense. So I mean, this blob is just something. That, I don't know what to do. Since, how long you been there? Thoughts?
You want more second family going in there, I guess, is the question, if people own it.
Yeah, but, I mean. This probably is gonna be some sort of. Sort of high density. Commercialized industrial. Is what it's gonna be. It's gonna basically be. The last place where you can build anything, cause it's already built that way, that's pretty much what's there. And that's really well built up. This area isn't, but this area is pretty heavily built up, don't you think?
If you don't stock the transient rentals in the commercial zones, that's what that's gonna build out as.
It's already built out, this is.
Parts of it, yeah. There's, there's still a few vacant lots along. Along in there, but. You know, if it remains a B one, you know, a business type zone. And you allow. You know, if that's the only place that transient rentals are gonna go, then, then that's. You know, that's what's burning it up right now, so.
Yeah, and that's mostly down here, that's done. I don't think there's many left to build out here.
Well, they, they're, they're working across the street at the, on the canal side now.
Well, here's.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that's what we've already said, that should be residential mix.
Yep.
Low, light. You know, light commercial, transient.
I think you have to retain some industrial type. Parcels somewhere and that seems to be the.
Perfect spot. I mean, so I guess this is it.
Have you given that a new designation?
No, we haven't gone through that.
So it's gonna. And, and the difference between B one and B two is, you know, basically a, a. An attractive outdoor nature and. That's in an area down there where, you know, half of those lots are already using unattractive outdoor type businesses. You know, so if the whole place were, were being used as a B two or, or designated in a B two way. Um, it's not gonna change the look and feel of the entire neighborhood.
Yeah, but the granularity, when you look at that, the look and feel, and I wanna do a counterpoint to this. The look and feel of, at least in this area. Is not bad. I mean, you've got the. You have the gas lodge, you've got some nice homes and some. I mean. Sooner or later, and it may be. That we carve, and there's no heavy industry anywhere in here in this B one, really.
No, not yet.
Heavier industry, so you know, maybe the answer is you do carve it like this. And basically to get to what you're saying at is. This becomes. The B two, it basically becomes no residential. Solid, you know.
Yeah, the problem that is, is this is already residential, you know.
Or maybe we look at where that doesn't happen, because where's? Avalon's, Avalon's in here. That's not bad. So I, but we need to look at this particular area where the residential weather. But my point being is this is not.
Spoiled yet.
Not that spoiled yet. It's a lot of residential. And it's a lot of full time mixed with. Um, transient rentals in there. All through here, so, uh, just some more thinking about that, I haven't even gone across the street yet. Alright. That's part of today. More head scratching and we'll get the board over here, more. Alright, so.
I just took a rezoning for that general area where a guy is wanting to expand his. You know, outdoor use. From his B two lot into his B one.
We just did one of those.
And, and you're looking at another one for a very similar, it'd be similar circumstance.
Dean Benjamin just did one, so, okay. Alright, more talking, more. Alright, last thing I have before. I take emotional adjourn is on Tuesday, August twenty ninth. The two P M, the planning commission special committee public meeting of walking and biking and ocean shores. This wire is here, take one. I will have these at the city council meeting on the table on Monday. And again, if you have anybody, anyone that has an interest in that, please come by, it's on the twenty ninth. At two P M right here, there's actually quite a bit of interest in this, so, we'll see. Will happen, but we'll see. And I will probably get ahold of you and talk a little bit before that. Alright, anything else to report from members? Alright, now we have another chance for public comment in the room. Go ahead, Jay.
I have one, uh, and it's. Uh, Doran mentioned about shared sewer water. And I'm curious about that, just for the fact that I was working on something with a couple of council members that enkeled that. So you all the rap, do you guys know? Do all the row houses have shared well water?
I can tell you that they are independently served, um, on all of the, um. Properties that were intended to be subdivided row houses. They have a common trunk line that runs from the city connection. In an easement that is accessible by the sewer department staff. And then from that trunk line, a six inch minimum trunk line. There are four inch service lines that go to each section of the structure, so.
They're, and they're independent.
They, they're independent, yeah, of each other and the chances of one sewer being plugged up. And plugging up the rest of the building is all but, you know, minimized to very low or no risk.
There's a water separately.
And the water, the water is separately metered as well.
Okay, yeah, well, there was two reasons there was that, and there's also, it, it came up with a project I'm working on and we're looking at it. At the ambulance beyond the water bills. And it kept coming up that they thought the condos were only paying that ambulance fee once. And so that's what I was kinda getting at, is if each are paying their own.
On these, on these Commonwealth subdivision structures. Each structure that's divided and becomes its own parcel number. Will have its own complete set of utilities, including the ambulance utility fee.
Okay, okay, great, thank you very much.
If it's subdivided.
If it is subdivided.
If it's a rental, that may or may not be the case.
Okay, thank you very much.
I understand, alright, anything else, Rita?
No. Thank you for letting me participate, I appreciate it.
Probably get in trouble, but that's okay.
Nah, you won't get in trouble.
Alright, and we'll have, and we will, I'll figure out a way to get your comments out to everybody and we'll discuss more at the next meeting. Um, anything else in the room? Carrie, anything before we let you go? Alrighty, do I have a motion to adjourn? Second, that's so easy, Mark and Paul, all in favor? Good. Thank you all, we're done.